You here for our meeting?
Uh, no, it's my friend. He went to get his glasses.
Personnel committee.
What?
Personnel committee.
It's Elias Rodriguez, correct?
Yes.
No, the appointment of Elias Rodriguez that was tabled on November fifth.
Oh, okay.
So, we're gonna take that. He is here. Yeah, I'd like to take that off the table when we start. Day, December fifteenth. To my far left, I have Council Vice Chair Neil Caverdrigas. To my left, I have Oneira Aquino, Councilor Aquino. Councilor Modesto Maldonado, our Council President. We have Roger Tumi, Councilor Tumi and Councilor Vasquez. And I am your Chair Sandy Elizabeth Almonte. Can we please rise for a moment of silence? Pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Councilors, I'd like to entertain a motion to take document three sixty-seven fourteen out of order and off the table place.
Okay.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
You guys have it. Document three sixty-seven fourteen is the appointment to Lawrence Redevelopment Authority of Mr. Elias Rodriguez. Mr. Rodriguez, if you can please come to the podium. Thank you.
Hello, Vice Rodriguez, one ninety Ferris Street.
Thank you. This is for a reappointment for a five-year term. He was appointed earlier this year to complete the last few months of an existing term. And they are now asking for his reappointment for a full term. I will open up to the committee for questions of Mr. Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mr. Rodriguez.
Good evening.
Thank you. I remember the first time that we voted in your favor.
Yes.
Give us a little bit about your experience so far.
So, so far, I think we've been doing a lot of good things. We're working really closely with the planning, planning and development department or whatever. So, hopefully soon in the next couple of weeks, actually, we're gonna try to get somebody higher, like an external source like that. We can start a urban development plan and actually make some actual changes. But with the past couple of months, what we've been doing is we've just been, uh, kinda been taking care of like small, small tasks, like getting rid of some lands, like that they can build a park up here next to Prospect Street. That park's gonna be in development. Couple licenses given out to a couple of clubs that were using some of our land and kind of didn't want them to lose the business. But, so we worked something out with them and so, so, you know, small stuff right now. But we definitely, um, we're moving in the right direction now that we're, uh, a little bit more focused. Finally have all our, all our members, because we were waiting for like the state-appointed member to come before we can actually like vote as a team or whatever. So, now we got everybody and now we're just, we're focused on our, on getting our urban development plan ready so like that we can, we have a really big plan. But it's gonna take, it's gonna take at least five years, well, at a minimum of five years to go through all the ideas that we have for like downtown west and all that stuff.
Are you having fun of what you're doing?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, we're definitely, uh, a lot of, uh, a lot of enthusiasm, especially with all the different plans that the city planning board has. Wow, there's so many different projects and we're right there, you know what I mean? So, it's really neat.
I'm not gonna ask you any more questions because obviously, uh, we review your, your application not too long ago. And we are very pleased that you decide, you decided to stay on. So, I, great.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Councilor Tumi?
I'd just like to second that. I was, I'm happy to see you're a happy worker.
Yeah.
It looks like you really enjoy what you're doing up there.
Yeah, definitely. Um, it's really, it's really good actually seeing some of the impact that we've already made, some of the smaller changes. Like, um, I think the, uh, the Pacific Mills, they needed us to clear, to sell some land off to them that we owned or whatever, so like that they can continue their project. And they're gonna, they're doing this whole like eighty-unit thing over there on their side. And we were kinda like blocking that because they needed, they needed that piece of land so they can allow the, like, the fire department to get under there in case of emergencies and stuff. So, that was like a big holdup. So, um, that was, that was really neat that we were like part of that and saw what we had to do in order to get, get the, uh, get them, give them our land or whatever. So, it was a good process to go through. We'll be doing that a lot more in the next couple of years, so.
That's great. Congratulations. Glad you're on. That's all.
Thank you. Well, it's good to see that you have the energy and wants to, and actually you're learning. He's learning all new things also.
Oh, yeah, everything's.
So, that's, that's really good that there's a learning curve involved in what you're doing, because that's kinda like how I got into everything. I started working in one place and then for being so nosy, I got to learn everybody else's job. And then I went somewhere else and learned, did all that, then kept doing it.
Oh, yeah.
And here I am. So, it's, it's, it's a good thing, especially when you don't have to pay for that education and it's hands-on. And, um, and you learned the process along the way and you also get to meet all the people and the resources and the supporters. And, and so it makes for a good, um, support system above all. I thank you for, um, for wanting to be part of this and, and again.
Yeah, yeah.
Reappointed to it, which is good, because a lot, some people will get into it and then just be like, this wasn't for me or, but most of the people that we have in there have continued to wanna become part of the group that we, that they choose to be in and that we appoint them to. So, thank you for that. But Councilor Aquino? Councilor Alvarez?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Mr. Rodriguez, through you, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm really happy that you're optimistic about a lot of the planning that's going on. I do have some questions. In the, in the process of the meetings that you have, is the, is public participation available to people?
Technically, no, there isn't any public participation. But last week, actually for the past two meetings, we've had actually quite a bit of people come to the meeting just to listen in. But just recently, a couple of people decided to like, uh, because we were talking about, uh, we did like an initial meeting on how we develop a, a urban development plan or whatever. So, we got, we got a really nice presentation from the, uh, the city planning department. And they were just going over the projects that they were interested in and that they're actually currently working on. So, a lot of people apparently wanted to see that. And we, we let like a couple of people just like with their opinion. But typically, uh, we don't. We don't allow, uh.
Well, um, you know that there has been issues about flooding and, um, people's homes being affected by it. And I speak specifically about North Boylston Street.
Oh, yeah.
Where people came up to discuss it and there was no real explanation as to why that was not a good issue to be addressed by the Lawrence. And, and the reason why this is important is because there was a, a court decree. The North Boylston, specifically, one of the residents there had to take, um, our, um, inspectional services to court. Because when they, when they developed there, they did nothing about having a sewer. And now there, there's been flooding. But if, if, if that is not something that your commission, the Redevelopment Authority, can deal with, were they directed to go back to the city because the city?
Yeah, so, yeah, so there was definitely, um, I actually remember, remember these, uh, these people. So, um, so we, we, they, they brought their case to us, um, uh, and they spoke about the flooding and everything that happens. And, and we asked them, okay, uh, who owns that property and, and that, that's, that portion of the street, who owns that or whatever? And turns out, uh, it's actually the city's street and it's somebody's private property. So, technically, there's nothing that we can do because, one, we don't have an urban development plan to actually act on that property. And we wouldn't pick, uh, like one project to just fix somebody's home, just one home, you know what I mean? We pick a project to fix like a neigh, like a portion of a neighborhood, you know what I mean? We wouldn't pick like do, uh, do like, uh, side projects like that. And, but we did direct them to maybe get quotes, so like that's, uh, they can see how much, how much it is. But, I mean, that's something that has to get funded by the city, uh, not necessarily by the Redevelopment Authority.
Okay, I kinda figured that that's what was going on, because I know you have a separate fund, um, by the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority that's not really, um, accessed by, by the city other than the purpose for why it's there.
Yep.
However, it, it seems that, um, there was very little explanation and so I got a lot of calls about it.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I did get a lot of calls about it and, um, I was told that they were not allowed to speak. However, when there was a, an, uh, a following issue, um, the public was allowed to speak. So, I'm wondering, you know, if you guys or maybe you, Mr. Rodriguez, can, um, ask about setting a policy, either there's public participation for everybody or there's no public participation at all. And that's something that, you know, I would wholeheartedly appreciate if you would address.
Okay. I'll make that an action item for, for our next meeting. Hopefully, uh, we can get that into the agenda.
Yeah. And if you guys can send a letter to, um, to the, uh, what is it, twenty-one North Boylston? And, um, let them know what you said, to go out and get quotes and go back to the city, because the city side needs to pay for that. And the court did mandate that they do that.
Actually, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, they did, so they did, uh, show us that. And, um, yeah, definitely. I, I believe, um, our other, uh, member, committee member, Mr. James Patrick Adonahue, was the one who brought it, brought it to our attention twice, so.
Right. So, it's important that the people there know that, why it was not being addressed at that.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's kinda what we tried to explain to them, that, yeah, we're the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority, but our power is limited, uh, when it comes to projects of that sort, since it's not necessarily a project that affects the community. That's more of like somebody's private property, you know what I mean? So, um, like who would fund that? Where would, where would that come from, you know what I mean? Especially, if it's, so it's, if it was an item that we were to take care of, definitely we'd, we'd get quotes and, uh, we'd get somebody to survey the land and we'd do the whole, the whole process, but.
The whole shebang.
Yeah, but in that instance, it was just, it was really, um, it was just really that one instance in that, in that, in that street. It's not like the whole, that whole neighborhood came, you know what I mean? It was just that one house, uh, so.
Well, Mr. Rodriguez, thank you so much.
Yeah, definitely.
For addressing my concern and, um, I'm glad that, uh, you've decided to continue.
Sure, yeah. I'll send out a follow-up email, uh, just like that we can get, get this cleared up, you know what I mean? Definitely. It's important to have public participation. I felt kinda weird, because we couldn't have it technically according to, because, so we have our lawyer there. And he was just explaining to us like that's, that's the, that's the current policy that we have. So, that's, that's another reason why, why we couldn't get into detail about that.
But then it has to be enforced with everyone.
Yes, yep.
See what I'm saying? Because then people get upset and then they think you're picking on them or whatever. But thank you. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to ask those questions.
No, and it was very good information, um, also for us, uh, the questions that you had, because this brings about, um, I mean, us getting, all of us getting phone calls or having someone, a constituent, ask this question and we wouldn't know anything about that situation had it not been, because you brought it up and his explanation to the facts. So, I appreciate the information.
No problem, no problem.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to send it up with favorable recommendation.
Motion's made. And second, all in favor?
Aye.
You guys have it. Our next full council meeting, um, will be in two weeks from tomorrow. Actually, no, are we going on?
It's gonna be on the first, uh, Tuesday of January.
First Tuesday of January.
Which is, I believe, the fifth.
Okay, that's fine.
So, Tuesday, the sixth? So, would be?
So, I'll just come here? Just come here?
Three Kings Day.
Just one second and I will, uh...
Very full calendar?
Yeah, uh, the sixth.
The sixth, okay. So, Tuesday, Tuesday, the sixth, for the full council meeting to be approved by the full council at seven PM.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alrighty, I'll be here. Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, back up to the top. Uh, new business. We have document three ninety-fourteen. It's regarding the firing and hiring of specific city employees. And this was brought to our attention by Councilor Vasquez, so I will, um, leave the questions for Councilor Vasquez.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, for giving me the opportunity to speak on this, um, item. And I know I'm not a voting member here. I'm not necessarily partic, uh, particularly looking for any action tonight. It's more of an opportunity for us to, to know. We have been, uh, we have heard from, you know, prior city employees, this is an issue that has been going on for multiple years. And in this administration is something that, you know, has happened as well. And I think it's important that we do have that discussion in reference to the hiring and firing policies. Maybe they should be revised in the future as to, you know, the, the specific, uh, certain positions. I know that the city council doesn't have necessarily a lot of power, uh, when it comes to it, but I think that we should revise it and, and see if we could strengthen, uh, you know, those type of abilities. I don't know if the conversation, like, I don't, I don't know exactly what could be done from this level, but I do hope that we could possibly do something. We are, we were given the opportunity for three specific, um, positions citywide. But I think that we should look closely as to how things are handled in other capacities in which we might not have the possibility of, uh, being hands-on involved with. So, that's why I'm putting this on, on, on the agenda. I don't know much of the personnel dynamics as to how the committee, you know, certainly functions. So, it's more for a discussion, uh, purpose rather than an actual, uh, motion or, I don't know.
Or an action.
Yeah.
I think, I'm sorry, I think that one of the better things to do is to, um, like you said, we could leave it here tabled after we talk on the item. We can invite Personnel Director Frank Bonet to come down so that he can explain to us a little bit of what those, um, contend to. Or maybe he can bring down, um, we can make a part of the motion for him to bring down any information into the, whatever processes are in place now to see if there's anything that we can do in the revision process or to help alleviate some of that situation or give recommendations to. If we are not the power to change that, that we can make certain recommendations to see if, hopefully, that that would, that can take effect, because it does affect the entire city. And, um, I've gotten, and this is really good, because I've gotten calls, you know, or why now and this, that and the other. And I, I, I always use an analogy so that people can understand exactly what I'm saying. And I say, well, when you have your first child, you go through the process of learning how to deal with certain situations. By the time you have your second child, you already know what to expect. You already know how to do certain things, you know, and as you go along. And, and you continue to be in that process, well, you learn and, and you gain experience and then you, you know what it is that you need to do. And therefore, you know, I wasn't here, you know, I've, I've been here for three terms. I'm, I'm very honored and grateful to be here. And I feel that, you know, having, having been in the process before, that, um, that now we know how to and what to and, and certainly try and get, um, solutions to the things that we have seen that have, that have happened. And therefore, that was my explanation to the person and, and they understood. But they also were still, you know, um, very adamant that we do something about this, because families are being affected. Their family isn't affected because they still have a position here in the city. But so close to the holidays and certain issues that happen in certain families, there being more than one person, um, let go of a certain position. That affects, um, you know, you think of the family as a whole, but I also think of, um, you know, adults can sort of take care of themselves, but kids don't know why certain things happen. And it's beyond a parent's power to be able to control something like that when something this grave happens at a time like this. And then the other parts of that would be, if we are going to do some type of firing, what kind of support system do we have in place? Are we looking at that particular just person? If they're not being fired, I believe for a specific reason, they did something that has provoked for them to be fired, like a miss, uh, uh, you know, misconduct at job or, or the job or something like that. Well, that you, you're obviously not gonna look into, well, it's your fault because you did something and that's up to you to decide for your family. But if it's a situation that we have some type of control over, that we be not lenient, but caring and have a heart for certain families because of the situation that you're gonna be putting them into. Then you could at least try to find some recourse or support or, or something of some sort instead of just, um, basically leaving, you know, a, a person hindering of, of, of needs, health-wise, food-wise, clothing-wise, home-wise. So, it's, it's kinda difficult and I hope that we were, we're able to do something about this.
And, and what's interesting, ever since, this is basically gonna say my age and I don't like to say that I'm too young. But since I was seventeen, uh, which wasn't too long ago, I, you know, I've been somewhat involved in the, in the community. And I've always heard, you know, how certain administrations will hire or fire, um, city employees, um, you know, for part, uh, recent X or Y. But I think that we should have some, I, I understand we have some, certain union contracts that we have to abide by. But I also feel that, what about the, the, uh, city employees that might not have a protection, uh, when it comes to an union contract? They're up in the air, so, you know, anything could happen to them. The hiring and firing of, uh, individuals who are here on a temporary basis. You know, we, we've seen that over the years and I think that something needs to stop. I know that we're gonna be discussing at a, at a different capacity, the, uh, either changing it from ninety days to a hundred and twenty days and, and whatnot. You know, but if we're gonna make a change, I suggest that we make it that is something strong and in which it wouldn't be just a placeholder for a person to be there for three months and then say, look, we don't need you anymore. I'm gonna use the same opportunity to get another person and replace, and, and have that constant back and forth between people. So, I'm hoping that, i- it, looking at it at the bigger picture, it's a way to protect our city workers in a way. And, you know, future administrations as well, uh, so, you know, we have employees that are possibly doing a good job, so let's protect them. If we have some that are not doing a good job, then there has to be a process as well to reprimand them and say, look, you're not doing what you're supposed to. So, unfortunately, we have to let you go. But I think that some sort of protection, uh, for those that do not have an union contract needs to exist.
Or the other thing that I was thinking is to make some of those.
I'm for the city. There needs to be a protection for the city.
To make some of those positions cold-terminous. So, then they would know, you know, that, that, or have it put in there, that it may be cold-terminous, that you may be heading out with the administration that hired you. So, that way you're not in a surprise. If, if the next administration wants to keep you, they do. And if they don't, they, so that way you kinda know and you're not, you don't have an expectation of, I might have this job for, past this administration. That at least it's told to them, you know, and that way, you know, I'm gonna be here for four years. I can plan for these four years. And then I know that, you know, in three and a half years, I might have to, you know, tweak my schedule a little bit, because I might have to be somewhere else. So...
You know, there are, uh, uh, when I, I, I met with, uh, the Personnel Director Frank Bonet, wa, uh, way back, um, probably around February, because I was interested, uh, because the, the amount of people that were being, uh, terminated, I was interested obviously, uh, as to whether due process was being followed. And there are many different categories of employees, okay?
Yeah.
That can be replaced without any reasons, those who are temporary, less than one year. They can be replaced, they can be simply terminated, uh, without any reason. And normally, those individuals are the ones that go first, because whenever a new mayor comes in, those are the first target that the mayor will use in order to put in people that work in his campaign. And we are talking about the same things that happened in the past administration and in this administration. But again, my biggest concern is more on, on, on those individuals who were let go even though they were in the union. Okay? And they, and there was no due process. Okay? There was no due process at all. And those are my biggest concern. Uh, there's no question, there's no question that, that every mayor wants to have as many, uh, of the employees as possible that are, that are in target with his ideas and his objectives in mind. So, I, I don't have a problem with that, okay? But, uh, my biggest concern again is simply due process. People, if you wanna change somebody and that person's in the union, please provide them with a due process, because that union person cannot simply let go. If somebody has been working for eight years, okay, uh, uh, you know, don't simply let them go without giving them any reasons, you know? Don't, don't simply fire them just because you may assume certain things, you know, that that person is doing. Give them a, give them a reason. And this thing be, you know, the, the past administration and the present administration have done firing that has caused litigation. And it cost the city money. It's, it costs in the past and it's costing the city right now. It's costing money, okay? So, it is important that we understand, it is important that we understand exactly how hiring and firing is done and what procedures are followed and whether proper procedures are being, are in place that allowed the administration to get rid of people without, uh, without, uh, uh, putting the city and the taxpayer in jeopardy. That is, that is very important, okay? Because again, the, the past administration did it, this administration did it, and probably all the previous administration have done it. And they have cost the city money. They have cost the city a great deal of money, okay? And it is about time that we as, 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 as council members, we get involved into this and we get to understand exactly what is going on. And, and again, we are not criticizing specifically any administration, because I know that every administration, uh, uh, in the past has done it, okay? And it is a shame that, that, that the taxpayer have to carry the burden of mistakes that we make, you know? And we are part of the administration, you know, we, we, we have the legislative branch. So, we need to get involved, okay? Because we are supposed to represent the interests of the people, okay? And whenever the taxpayer is placed in jeopardy, we cannot keep quiet. We should not keep quiet, okay? So, I think the idea of inviting Mr. Bonet to, uh, to, to this committee, I think is a great idea so that we understand exactly what are the ways that somebody, that a mayor can replace an employee and which categories, uh, uh, can cause litigation if they are not done properly. And, and hopefully, hopefully, uh, for the future generation, for the future city council and for the future mayor, we can set some precedent that is going to, uh, stop the problem of litigation. We can set some precedent that is going to uh uh stop the problem of litigation. So I'm hoping that that we can accomplish that much, at least we can, we can leave behind a legacy. Uh, that this council uh really wants to do the best for the city. And that this council wants to make sure that things are done properly, that this council wants to make sure that the integrity. Of 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 the of the city charter and the ordinance uh are are uh adhered by, you know? That 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 is very important.
We have, we all know what's going on with hiring and firing, we know that we have. Positions that haven't been posted, so the problem is there, we already have lawsuits, the problem is there.
Of course, of course.
So we have to come with an idea to to protect whoever it's doing what is wrong to do, to come to us. And let us know, you know what, I was, it wasn't on my hands, it wasn't somebody else's hand, I'm working, I'm doing my job, I I. Did what I was told to do, so there, we have to create a way for the personal committee, uh, the personal director, whoever is the personal director at whatever time. That he can come to us, say, you know what, this is happening, uh, I'm not agree with it. And he will have the freedom to come to us before a lawsuit comes. Before a lawsuit comes, we need to know if even if the the city is gonna lose a lot of money because of it. I think we should have the financial director to come into us, he already know how many um delegations we have, he already knows. Are we able to pay? Because wrongdoing, the personal director has to come to us and say, you know what? That if it if it's a executive session, committee meeting, we have to go in a second session for him to explain to us what happened. And each of them, each of them, we need an explanation for each of the seventy something people that were fired. Not all of them were fired the proper way, because we have lawsuit right now, are we able to pay those? Are we gonna be able to, like, the financial director should come too, we should have an executive um meeting. Cause I know it's information that we need has councils, but also we're gonna put the city in a situation where we're gonna give them. The chance to win too easy, so we do need the information, it had been done, both hiring and firing wrong. That's all I have to say, yes, I would like to make um make make a motion to invite. Uh, personal director Fran Bonet and also financial director, um, Mr. Ariane Lo.
I second the motion.
Motion's made in second, council to me, yes, discussion?
We got you, we got you, I'll give you a couple of seconds.
Oh, neither went to get water.
So, um.
What I was gonna say was the uh, we all know the the unions are involved with a lot with a lot of these things, people that are in new unions, they have the union to protect them, okay? If they're fired illegally, the union has to step in and do what they have to do, okay? The thing is, if they are fired illegally like that. As Modesto says, there's a good possibility that there could be litigation brought because of that point, so. I guess what I'm saying is that the man sits upstairs, the one that does the firing, has to follow the proper procedure.
Of course, this is what we're looking to do.
Now, how can you, is how can you force him to follow the proper procedure? It doesn't do any good to say, well, it's gonna cost the city money if you go ahead and do it the way you're talking about. If you follow the, if you follow the direction, especially union people, not at will people is something different. At will people, they're they're hired with with that thought in mind, that they are not protected by a union, okay? Even though they might be doing a good job, it's it's still a matter of, well. If I don't like what what you're doing, I'm gonna let you go and bring somebody else in, we have no control over that. And I don't even know how we can put things into either charter or the uh a a ruling that say, well, look, you have to do this.
Well, it it might be.
We can have an ordinance that says every um city department head. If you do something that is gonna put the city and you know that you're doing it wrong and the city is gonna have to pay, you are responsible for it. You are responsible for it, if you know that you're doing something wrong and you still do it. You're gonna be responsible for it because there's an ordinance that says if you fire someone that you know it wasn't, the procedures wasn't. The way it should be and you did it anyways, you are responsible for it, why should we pay, the city should pay for it? If you knew you were doing it wrong, if you're not, if if it doesn't hurt you in your pockets. And somebody else is paying for you, why would you care? That's what I think we should do, we should also have an ordinance that even the DPW director. If they fire people from his department and he knew it was wrong, he should be responsible for it. If you're not responsible, you're not gonna come here and say, you know what, I have nothing to do with it, that will force them to come to us and say, I have nothing to do with it. Was wrong done, it was done wrong and I want you guys to know, and we go from there, I think we should.
There's not, you know, there's no question in my mind that mayors will come and mayors will go. And that they are going to replace employees at will. Uh, because they want somebody there uh that have worked in their campaign and and that's fine, again. But I think that that in the end, what we need to do as a city council is that we should uh create some ordinances. That are going to set a process in place for getting rid, getting rid of employees, replacing employees. So, uh, I know, for example, that unions are supposed to protect employees, but I know. Of employees that were in the union and they were let go and the union did not do anything. So they were not protected at all, they were not protected in any way, so so. Exactly, exactly, but the union chose not to not to do anything, you know? So, uh, so again, I think that if that if we uh maybe working with the personal director, we can develop. Uh, uh, policies and procedures that should be used, uh, and and.
I think the legal department should be involved too.
Yes, oh, oh, definitely, oh, definitely, 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 because the attorney would know. Exactly what would generate litigation and what would not generate litigation, what process uh uh would generate and what process will not generate litigation.
In fact, we have an excellent attorney today because he's uh, he's a labor attorney.
Exactly, exactly.
Both sides of the house.
Exactly.
Municipalities.
Exactly.
So he knows, he knows his work.
I would add to, I meant my motion and also add um city attorney to come to the meeting.
Let's specify, let's specify, isn't it Bob Cuzo?
What, Charles Body?
No, 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 no.
Mr. Cuzo will be great.
Cuzo will be the uh.
Okay, the person.
Yes, he will be the appropriate one.
Body's doing a litigation for.
Oh, well, with all the litigation that we have, I also would like to get Charles Body here, um, that we can come up with the numbers and.
But I second the amendment.
Thank you.
Motion's made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, um, councilor, uh, did you, Vasquez, did you wanna say something on the item even though we just closed?
Um, it was back, my train of thought, it was in reference to um. The special authorization we received back in two thousand nine, two thousand ten uh for, you know, when we did the borrowing, I wasn't here. When we borrowed the the money.
Twenty-five.
There was um, uh, something that's, you know, mentioned specifically what Council Arcina was talking about. In reference to department heads alone that they would be liable for any mismanagement, particularly within their their budget. So I know that that part speaks specifically about the budgeting of each department, but something similar. Uh, to that should probably be in place for the personal uh component of the departments. Because I know that addresses specifically the budgeting part of it, um, and that's, and and that alone. But maybe something, uh.
Do you know what specific area that, that's chapter fifty-eight?
Chapter fifty-eight, uh, I could find find it, but it doesn't address personnel matter.
It addresses the budget, money.
Yeah, it's specifically in reference to the budget portion, um, of of the departments that they oversee, so maybe something.
There is a, in the uh, in the agenda tomorrow, uh, there is one item that I put in the agenda. Uh, and there's gonna be an ordinance uh that has already been drafted by the city attorney that I asked him to. That is going to address the issue of employees making bad decisions knowingly and costing the taxpayer money. So that that ordinance has already been drafted by our city attorney and it's gonna be sent down to the ordinance committee so that. Uh, we can eventually review it at the full council and and discuss it and either approve it or reject it. But there are actions on the part of employees, supervisors, that that they know is going to generate. Litigation and it's going, and there's going to be losses, they know, or at least they should have known, okay? And and my feeling is that 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 if they intentionally uh did something. That is going to cost the taxpayer money, they should pay for it, we should make them responsible for it. So that that that's the other, that's the item that that is gonna.
It's gonna create some good discussion for tomorrow, because we already have some ammunition here. Okay.
I make a motion that we table document three ninety fourteen.
Motion's made.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to take document uh one forty-nine fourteen out of table matters.
And out of, and out of order, so move second on, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Madam Chair, I met with uh per- the personal direct.
Document one forty-nine fourteen, city employment, core review and physicals prior to commencing.
Yes, um, one of my biggest concerns uh this year. Uh, and I am sure that it may have happened uh in other administrations, okay? Uh, but one of my biggest concern was the fact that that there were uh, there were employees that started working. Without going through the corey and without having fiscal, okay? And when I spoke to uh uh Mr. Bonet, I I asked him to draft a a policy. Uh, that if you need, if you needed approval from the city council, I don't know whether it does or not, but uh to to make sure that no employees. Will start working until they have completed two things, the corey and also the physical exam. Because it can be very damaging to us, okay, it can be very damaging to us if we hire somebody. Uh, without a corey and later on we find that that person has some record, uh, or. Uh, it can be damaged, be be very damaging to us that a that a person has a physical problem. And we were not aware of it and suddenly it becomes a, it becomes an issue uh with 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 the city. Uh, so what I would like to do is make a motion that we uh, that when Mr. Bonet comes at the next meeting. Uh, that he also bring us uh the um, the policy if he has already completed, writing it. Uh, uh, on how we should deal with employees before they they commence, before they start working. Uh, uh, and this is uh in regard to the corey and the physical exam, so I make that into the form of a motion.
Could I add, could I add something to that, I would like to know who in the system right now is not quarried, also.
Okay.
I would really like to know who is not quarried because they shouldn't be receiving a check if they're not quarried. I've never heard of that being in, did you know that I could not go on my son's field trip? Because I didn't have a corey with the Lawrence Public School System and I've been a city council for the past six years. So how is it that we're gonna, and they know me here, they know me in the school system, I worked for them for a very long time. All three of my children went to that school, they know me, they want me to go on the field trip, trust me, I get those kids right here. But I, um, they did not let me go on the field trip until they had a corey. So, I mean, how is it that we're gonna allow employees, especially where we have some of our employees who enter people's homes? Um, you know, that could lead into some serious, serious, serious um precautions for the city, uh, and also, um. Even even if there's something, say, um, in in the litigation process where someone is not supposed to be around somebody. And they know that, but because of their job, like, say, a restraining order or something like that, but because of their jobs, they're able to come near that person and we didn't quarry them. Do you know what type of lawsuit that is, we're endangering someone's life, that is insane to even think that this situation could happen, wow. Um, yeah, so I I would like to add to that, we need to know who, which employees are not quarried, um, at this moment, at this time.
Or had passed a physical exam.
Or have not passed the physical.
Were considered employees?
We were quarried, we signed that, we 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 get quarried every single time, yeah, every term.
Except that we didn't have to go through a physical exam.
Exactly, but we get quarried, yeah, oh, yeah, we get quarried.
Well, I, Madam Chair, I make that again, the motion with the amendment.
Thank you, motion's made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
I make the motion to table document one forty-nine fourteen.
Document one forty-nine fourteen, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to take document one twelve fourteen out of table matters.
So moved, I'm, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, document one twelve fourteen, Lawrence Police Officers and Lawrence Firefighters for Physical Fitness.
Uh, just briefly, uh, we didn't get any feedback from any of the unions.
Okay.
Uh, so there seems to be no interest on the part of any of the unions to participate in this. Uh, nevertheless, I ask the personal director to do a little research uh for for us. Uh, and he already provided me with an envelope uh with a lot of documentation. So at the next meeting, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be making copies for for the personal committee so that we can look at how. Uh, uh, physical fitness has been implemented in all the cities and towns.
Oh, great.
Uh, the, um, again, we have invited the the unions to be part of this. So that they don't feel that we are leaving them out and that we are trying to create a, to we are trying to create ordinances or policies. That that are going to affect them without their input, because to, I think to us is very important to hear their input and how they feel about it. So, uh, again, at the next meeting, I will be uh print, making copies and providing the members of this co- of this group, of this committee to. So we can review it and and see what, we can come up with a policy uh that is going to require some physical standards. Some physical fitness for certain employees of the city, okay?
Thank you, someone's good for a motion to be table document one twelve fourteen?
Motion to be table?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that we ask uh that uh, that we ask the different members of the city council. To look at the uh, at the agenda of the personal committee and to tell us whether they want, they want us to keep. That particular item in the agenda, we are looking at items going back to two thousand and ten. Okay, and 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 since the ordinance committee is cleaning up. Uh, their agenda, I think we should do the same thing and probably all the other committees should do the same thing, so.
I had asked for that as a motion, we did it at the full council, that we cleaned up all the um, agenda items for all of the committees.
So again, I would like to make the motion that we send communications to uh all the members of the city council who have items in the personal agenda. Going back to two thousand and ten and to let us know whether they want to keep those items in the agenda or not.
Motion's made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion's made, is taken, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, housing committee.